And there we are, fully operational.
Are you ready to go?
And it is 6:05, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I like the new mask. Very nice. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome. This is a study session of the Mayor and Village Board for the Village of Woodridge. Today is Thursday, November 19th, 2020, and the time is 6:06 PM. We call the meeting to order and ask our deputy clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Hendricks.
Present.
Trustee Martinez.
Present.
Trustee Abbott. Recall Trustee Abbott.
Present.
Trustee Crusek.
Present.
Trustee Page.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present.
Our quorum is established.
Thank you, everyone. The purpose of this evening's study session is to review and discuss a concept for a private property stormwater drainage improvement grant program for the Village of Woodridge. Going to ask if staff is ready to do their presentation for us this evening.
It's Mayor Cunningham, Director Bethel, and Building Commissioner Eric Alwyn are going to be handling tonight's presentation. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Welcome, gentlemen.
Phil, if you could queue up PowerPoint?
All righty.
So I'd like to say Eric Alwyn and I had arm wrestled, and I just barely lost, and that's why I'm going to be presenting this tonight. But just kind of for the efficacy with Zoom, I'll be doing kind of the majority of the presentation. But community development and public works kind of both jointly work on any type of private property drainage issues, and so Eric will be jumping in to help with some of the questions. So if we can go to the next slide, please, Phil. So the goals for tonight, what we were going to do was just kind of refresh on our current processes that we follow when we are dealing with a drainage issue. We're going to talk a little bit about the cost-sharing program that's been drafted, as well as kind of some current programs we offer that provided a framework for, and then this proposed program, and then kind of throughout the night, seeking some feedback from the mayor and board on that framework. And so, just to clarify, that's really what it is. It's just framework, doesn't necessarily have all the details built into it, but it's an opportunity to get some feedback, to make sure we're heading in the right direction. So that kind of takes us to what the next steps might be. If there's some more information or research that the mayor and board want, we can gather that after tonight. Or we may, if the mayor and board desire, just kind of keep talking about that framework to make sure, again, we're heading in the right direction. Or if, you know, the majority of the board is comfortable, you know, we can go back to start drafting the formal detailed documentation and process to bring that back forward for consideration. So, any questions on kind of the approach we were going to use before we get started? All right, Phil, if you want to go ahead and advance that again, please. So just to kind of briefly recap here, we get probably 30 to 40 drainage concerns in a year. Could be anything from standing water to how the property drains. It could be soft ground. It could be a neighbor that's creating a drainage issue. So those come into community development to start, and jointly between community development and public works, you know, we'll investigate the issue. And kind of listed here, and I won't necessarily run through them in detail, but this is kind of the general things we find or the recommendations that result from kind of these causes of, you know, sump pump discharges, you know, the grading plan, does it match what was originally there? You know, have adjacent properties put in permitted or unpermitted improvements that might be creating the problem. But again, just to kind of give you a sense of what we're looking at when we go out there. Next slide, Phil. And so then that kind of leads to, right, what are some of the recommendations that we can provide? And so, and I guess I should carefully phrase that. So it's really, it's suggestions as opposed to recommendations. So we try to, if there's a code compliance issue, the village will give kind of specific direction. But when it's items on their own private property, we'll give kind of pros and cons and some options to frame it up. But ultimately, when it's a private property improvement, the homeowner, the property owner is the one who's going to make that decision of what gets implemented. So kind of maybe a good analogy, if somebody is applying for, you know, a permit to put in a deck, we don't tell them how to design the deck, but we're going to let them know whether or not it meets code in order to get a permit to do that work. But again, this is kind of the general kind of feedback, and there'll be a written letter that, you know, we give property owners saying, you know, here's what we saw, and here's some items that we suggest that will help. Next slide, Phil. I'm sorry, Phil, next slide? All right, so the request was, yep, there you go, was made, you know, was it possible to do more, you know, in some of these drainage situations? And in no ways to eliminate what we have been doing with kind of providing some guidance and feedback and research, but can we possibly add to it with any kind of financial assistance? So just for context, we do have some other cost-sharing programs, and so there's some examples here. Some of them are items that take place in the right way on public property. So the village leads that effort, and the residents are simply paying a portion of the cost. It's parkway tree planting, it's supplemental streetlight installation. There are some that are private improvements, in which, in that case, it's on private property. The homeowners, the property owners, are the ones who lead that process and following the work and meeting the parameters of those respective programs. The village will reimburse the homeowners according to those programs. And that's things like, again, an overhead sanitary sewer, sanitary and storm disconnects. So what we did, kind of moving back to the drainage, is we put a request out to all the Public Works members, the Page Mayor's and Managers Conference, and said, you know, if you've got a municipal cost-sharing program, if you could share that with us. We ended up getting 10 programs that had provided kind of context of how those communities handle it. So that being said, again, we've laid out some parameters, but the mayor and board, they can, obviously, you can set any program parameters that you feel are, you know, right for Woodridge to set for this program. And just because maybe a program is approved doesn't mean it can't be revisited down the road to make modifications one way or another in those parameters. Kind of the one maybe underlying foundational point to remember, though, is that when we're talking about private property improvements, there have to be, and you're using public dollars on those private property improvements, there has to be a public benefit that's being derived from the expense of those public funds. So there was, from those 10 programs, we had a spreadsheet that kind of summarized those for you. And that's why, when you look at those programs, you're going to see some very similar requirements in all of them, in that there's a requirement that there has to be standing water for some period of time on one or multiple properties. And the reason that is, is standing water, you know, what's the public benefit? Well, standing water can breed mosquitoes. Standing water for a period of time can kill off turf, and which can create erosion and soil runoff issues. Some of the programs, they don't necessarily give a quantitative standard, but they simply say there has to be a public safety issue, which there's a structure flooding, there's a health and safety concern. And so they're all kind of framed up that this is the public benefit with this investment on private dollars. So while there may be a drainage issue or another issue on private property, when there isn't necessarily a public impact, it's a private matter to address. So kind of going backwards, like on the sanitary and storm disconnect cost-sharing program, that was put in place because, again, making that disconnect from the storm, the foundation drains to the sanitary sewer has a public benefit because it reduces the amount of, you know, water, stormwater that's flowing into the sanitary area, which provides additional capacity for the sanitary system, and it reduces the potential for backups that can impact residents. All right, next slide, Phil. So kind of the way we structured this... I'm sorry, was there a question maybe before we start to go into the program? So the way we'd structure this tonight is it's kind of broken down into program eligibility, cost-sharing, and then the process. And that way, we can kind of break it up into some smaller pieces to talk about and to get feedback on. So maybe to start, I think probably any good program, you got to have a good name. So in this case, we've got the Drip, which is the Drainage Remedy and Improvement Program. So maybe just to kind of step through the eligibility pieces, and we'll kind of run through each of these bullet points. The first one is, and what we saw in the other programs that were out there from the other municipalities, is that they're really set up for single-family residential. And that's not to say all 10 of those programs out there, but the majority of them were set up for single-family residential. Generally, that's the case because multifamily, governmental institutions, private businesses, you know, they have additional resources and a larger base to develop and pay for, you know, drainage issues they may have. The second item is, it would be, you know, recommended to be a one-time use only. So you're going to have limited funds that are set aside to provide kind of equitable access to those that, once it's adopted, it's a one-time use only. Each participant would ultimately apply for a permit that would be recorded against the property just to, again, memorialize for future reference that they had already participated in the event they wanted to do a second improvement or the property changes hands. And I'm going to kind of skip down, I'm going to circle back to kind of the contiguous property and timeline. So to jump down here to the sump pump and downspout discharges. Typically, those are not going to be eligible for a cost-sharing program. There are two items that both have limited duration of impact, you know, they're more active. When a storm is happening, less active or not active at all after a storm, the discharges can be moved to help improve those situations. And typically, even when you have, for instance, an overactive sump pump, you know, there's some simple solutions that, you know, a property owner can implement. The next item here was that, as far as one of the program parameters, was that the original property condition would need to be reestablished before being eligible for cost-sharing. And what that means is, sometimes when we go out on these drainage inspections, what we find, and obviously, it's never intentional. No property owner wants to impact their neighbor themselves, but you find unintentional issues. There's landscaping that was put in that changed the drainage. There was a swale, and it's been 40 years since it was built, and it just naturally silted in. So before kind of spending public dollars to rectify the situation that the property owner would put it back to what was approved and what was supposed to be there to mitigate that issue, and again, if for some reason, conditions have changed and it's not functioning, then at that point is kind of when this program kicks in in order to help the property owners. So I wanted to circle back here now to kind of the question of, you know, what is the impact and what is the eligibility related to properties? So what we, based on what we saw, we tried to put together kind of the smallest requirement as far as combination of properties, which was two. And then, you know, who is experiencing more significant issues? So in this case, 72 hours of standing water. So now, just to give kind of a little bit of background on that, typically, in our experience, when you start to get three days or more of standing water, that is when you're going to start to see the turf die off. It can certainly happen in less time than that, you know. Again, it depends, you know, if the area is shaded with trees, are there other issues? But generally, by the time you hit three days, you know, if you got standing water repeatedly, that's when you're going to start to see the turf die off. So, and again, maybe to use those programs, we had researched. So out of the 10 that were submitted, one is identical to what Woodridge does right now, is gives research and kind of feedback, may look to extend public infrastructure for homeowners to connect, but they don't do work on private property, and that's the city of Aurora. So I'm going to just kind of speak to the other nine that have cost-sharing. So five of those nine require a minimum of two properties. Some of them actually require three or four properties to be experiencing the issue before they'd be eligible. Of those nine, three of them have a 72-hour minimum standard. Now, some of them do have a 48-hour standard, but it's trying, it's kind of apples and oranges as we start to compare. So one of them has a 48-hour standard, but it requires four properties to have standing water for 48 hours. So it requires a larger area as opposed to a smaller area with a higher impact. One of them is 48 hours, and it only requires one property, but the only thing that that community will pay for is a storm sewer extension from the side yard. They don't offer the chance to cost-share and any other types of improvements. And then some of the other programs, they don't list that standard of properties or time, but they just simply say there has to be a health and safety issue, there has to be damage to a structure in order to be eligible. Kind of what we tried to put forward is, at the end of the day, if we're evaluating and trying to determine who's eligible, it's usually easiest to do that if there's kind of a measurable and quantifiable standard. So in this case, standing water for 48 hours or standing water for 72 hours is something quantifiable, you can document and say, yes, you definitely qualify. When you start to look at issues like, for instance, maybe soft ground, it starts to become a little bit more subjective of what is considered too soft versus what is maybe a nuisance, but not necessarily, you know, a public impact. Now, we had included an exception to kind of the requirement of having two properties. It was in the memo, we neglected to put it in the PowerPoint, but that's, if you're having some kind of overland flow that's creating damage to a house or structure, that one property alone would be, you know, eligible for the program. And that was, again, getting back to the public safety type impact. If there's some kind of flooding or damage that's happening to a home or structure, that that would also be eligible. So one piece of that, before we kind of open it up and try to get some feedback on this area of eligibility, one item we had not collected yet, but that we could, if it would help the mayor and board in their decision process, is we can go back and contact those nine communities and find out how many participants in each of their programs that they have. So it might give you an idea of, for the towns that just do storm sewers, how many participate? For those that have, you know, four contiguous properties, how many participate versus those that have two? It's not necessarily going to be analogous to Woodridge, because every town kind of has its own issues based on topography and when it was developed, was storm sewer put in, you know, development preferences. But again, might be a frame of reference. So Eric, anything to add, Eric Alwyn, anything to add maybe on this eligibility segment?
You know, Chris, I think you did a great job kind of covering it all. I don't think, I don't think I have anything to add right now.
So Mayor, I guess what we might suggest is this might be a good breakpoint, that if there are some feedback or questions or clarifications that we can answer in this segment before we move on to kind of the cost portion?
Okay, absolutely. Thank you very much for the, all the information in the presentation. I would like to ask our administrator if we have received any public comments.
Thank you, Mayor Cunningham. Good evening, board members. Yes, we did receive two public comments. The board was provided both of them in advance. They both will be entered into the public record. One is from Ron Potempa residing on Autumn Drive, and the other resident is Don Blair, also, who resides on Autumn Drive. And we have nobody in queue or in person here either, Mayor.
Thank you so much. So I would like to ask my fellow board members, this is a time where we can have discussion, get comments and your feedback, questions. So I would like to open it up, please.
I have a question for Director Bethel.
Yes, thank you, Trustee Page.
You referenced in the last part of your presentation, damage to a structure. Does it have to be damage to an original structure? Or let's say they installed a pool, and that pool is now damaged from standing water?
So what we were trying to do, again, in tonight being maybe the more general parameters, is we intentionally left structure a little bit vague. The home is maybe a little bit more straightforward, but to your point, could the structure be a pool? Could it be a shed? Is it a detached garage? And so we could kind of hone in maybe on where the mayor and board would want to go with that, but we had kind of intentionally left it open for right now.
In feasibly, the structure could be something that has been installed later? Or under the current program eligibility standards, going to the last bullet point, it has to be a structure that was part of the original property?
It could be. And so it could be a question of, is it a habitable structure? Is it just the home? Is it some of the ancillary structures on the property that might be eligible? So again, we could, or it could be right back to what was there originally and anything new that was added, if that's being impacted, you know, that could be obviously part of the cause for what's out there, too.
Thank you.
Anyone else, please?
Mayor, Trustee Martinez, you?
Yes, hi, Trustee Martinez.
I have a question, and specifically as to the Autumn Drive properties. As all of us know, Autumn Drive was built, I'm going to guess, at least 10 feet below the street behind it, or south of it. And there's a major hill in the backyard for most of those properties that contribute to the amount of water that runs down towards Autumn Drive. This is something that was done back in the 80s, I think. I lived in Woodridge, but I don't remember when Mendingwall designed this thing, or who did it. But the village had approval to it. How do we, and I guess this is a combination to Director, to Eric Alwyn, or to Director Bethel, I don't know who will answer this, but how are you taking consideration a design that was approved 40 years ago or 30 years ago? How is impacting the properties currently?
Well, I guess I could, can jump in just to say that, again, in terms of just these general parameters we've put together, we were not looking at any specific areas in trying to kind of craft the framework. But maybe regardless of where or when it was built, if it's experiencing damage or whatever kind of level of impact that the mayor and board want to set that threshold at, then those areas would be eligible.
Okay, but I'm addressing the comments that you received, too, from the public. And also, I'm addressing your statement on the program eligibility, that one of the requirements is that the property has to go back to your original property condition needs to be reestablished. What does that mean?
So oftentimes, we'll find on a property that there have been modifications made, and those modifications are creating problems as it relates to drainage. So again, maybe there was a swale, and oftentimes, we find a resident has taken a swale out. And again, not specifically talking to Autumn Drive, but the swale's been removed, and if the swale's there, it would likely resolve, you know, the majority of that drainage issue. So there's a swale that was originally approved, it needs to be put back on the property. If the swale's put in and the condition continues, then this is an opportunity, then, that the village could spend dollars to try to assist in that issue.
And that's, that's one of the things that we're seeing happen quite a bit with, you know, with our existing program, with some of the recommendations and some of the things that happen, is that, is that we come in and discuss, you know, hey, let, you know, we look at the original grading and the original, how it was originally designed, and how it's supposed to carry the water. And I think that kind of goes back to that point on the original property conditions need to be reestablished. I mean, I wouldn't say that it has to be brought back exactly to the way it was 40 years ago, but it does have to be, the theory is that it'd be brought back to the original drainage pattern, if you will. And, you know, and that's where, you know, it carries the water around the side or do something like that. And so those are, that's, that's the piece that comes into it. And we are seeing pretty good success with some of the houses around the village in areas, you know, some maybe a little bit younger than Mendingwall, and definitely older than Mendingwall, where they're coming back in and doing some work to the swales and actually getting the yards to drain back out.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? You know, Director Bethel and Mr. Alwyn, I do have some questions, because I guess I just think I need more information, because I would think that we have many different causes and circumstances with regards to maybe the 30 to 40 neighbor drainage issues that we have a year. I mean, are these kind of spread out as to what's causing or what may be an issue? Because I'm reading the eligibility, and I'm not sure that taking all of the different circumstances and causes that may cause water, standing water in someone's yard or backyard would necessarily meet some of the criteria? Or I guess I'm probably just saying, I think I need more information.
Mayor, are you talking on those, let's just say 30 of them, what is happening? Kind of what are the themes we see on those 30 that we go look at?
Yes. Please.
And Eric, I don't know if you can maybe speak to generally, you know, if there's three or four common things that you find?
Yeah, so they do range, they're kind of all over the place, but, but a lot of, a lot of the times, you know, we end up seeing certain things. And sometimes, I mean, you know, we, when we come back to kind of some of the swales, one of the things that we talk to them about, and a lot of what we do is we educate, and we talk about the, you know, the original drainage pattern and how things were going. And in a lot of cases, not a lot of cases, but, but in a fair amount, we do see that, like, people have put planter beds or done landscaping that actually impedes the flow and has, you know, and has messed up some of the grading and drainage in the area. And so we'll, we'll discuss with them and kind of, you know, go through those pieces. Part of it depends on the age of the, of the area. You know, when you come into some of the newer subdivisions down south, we do have some issues where people have put in significant landscaping. And in doing that, they have actually really kind of, you know, really have, have messed up the original drainage pattern, if you will. And when we meet with them, we go over that, and, you know, basically, you know, to eliminate this issue, you're going to have to move this landscaping that they put in. Now, you know, typically, they're not super excited because they did just spend a lot of money to put that in. But those are, a lot of, a lot of what we see is related to those types of improvements. Some of it is that, over the years, things silted, you know, the swales that we're discussing kind of go away. I, there's one particular instance where a resident kind of had a wet spot on the side of the house, and they're like, you know what, I'm going to plant a tree right there. Well, that was actually probably the worst thing they could have done, and it actually just, over the years, made this problem worse, you know, really bad. Once we kind of talked to them and educated them and went through all that, they actually cut the tree down, did a little bit of regrading on the side of the house, and it dried out their entire backyard. You know, and so the majority probably are related to a lot of downspout sump pump discharges. You know, a lot of people will put them in or discharge them, and they cause, you know, some nuisances as far as the, you know, creating wet spots in yards and some things like that. So we all, again, try to work with them on that, on how to, you know, where they can run it to. You know, we do allow them, if there is a storm sewer in the vicinity, to connect into it with a, with a sump pump discharge. And that has been significant to help those, those, those that are caused by some, you know, overactive sump pump discharges.
Okay, thank you. You know, as Trustee Martinez had brought up earlier, you know, in one pocket on Autumn, which the street above is Hickory, you know, that's south, that is impacting, kind of just how it's all laid out, how, if that's different than what, you know, some of the other things... How, if that's different than what, you know, some of the other things that we're seeing? So, let's say a person living on Autumn just builds a nice patio, you know, they want to have, you know, barbecue, whatever, outside, and maybe they're finding they have an issue, but that patio may be right up against their house. It's not, you know, back at the end of their property. I guess I'm trying to make sure that we're looking at building a program that is useful and helpful, and will do some good in our village. And I'm just, that's why I kind of keep asking a lot of questions, just in my own mind, with regards to the eligibility part, and then how we build that so we do meet being helpful and useful and making a difference.
Generally speaking, this is, this is Chris again, there's probably, there's a lot of areas in town that have significant topographical differences. For instance, you can kind of take the Woodridge Drive down to 63rd Street, where there's some large declines there, and every property has, kind of has the same drainage as Autumn, where it's all set up as horseshoe drainage, kind of heading out to the front, and then continuing to kind of head north and downhill. And one neighbor making a change can create significant problems for adjacent neighbors. And I reference that, that area there, kind of north of Woodridge Drive, because it's an area that Community Development and Public Works has spent a lot of time in. Again, a lot of the same issues with that horseshoe drainage. There are some areas, and Autumn Drive is one of them, where the village, because there wasn't a way to discharge that water from the rear yards, the village did install a storm sewer in the right of way. We put inlets on each property line, which provided kind of an outlet, and like Eric said, for overactive sump pumps, and, again, just generally to drain water away, that there was this, you know, large storm sewer that would take that water, that ultimately would end up in Mendingwall Park. So, and going back, that's why some towns, they, they just, and obviously, a storm sewer is always the most effective, and so that was kind of what got done in that case. But sometimes, there are some other options, you know, as far as, you know, regrading a swale, or a dry well, and other ways to kind of, kind of address that. But I guess going back, maybe to that question, again, we can set that eligibility requirement at really whatever the mayor and board desire. If you'd like us to look at more detail at those 30 to 40 inspections of kind of some other themes, we can, can do that. We can, again, talk to other towns to find out participation based on the parameters they use. Eric, I think if I recall correctly, out of those, you know, 30 to 40 a year, there's probably two or three that have the more significant impact of standing water for that, that 72-hour time period?
Yeah, yes, I would agree with that, that there's about, there's in that, in that, about that percentage.
Mayor, I got one more comment, if I may?
Yes, please.
And it goes back to the 72 hours. I'm familiar here in Woodbridge, my daughter owned a house that was getting water underneath the garage and into their heating vent adjacent to the garage. There was no water visible on the, on the top surface, as you suggested, standing water. But we discovered that, with a little bit of a investigation, that the water was actually settling in a, call it a swale, if you want to call it that way, that was soft, and the water was penetrating and sitting and moving left to right, if you want to call it that way. So I don't agree with the 72 hours or 48 hours. I think that's not a necessary situation. I think what we need to look at is what the impact of the drainage is creating, whether it's above ground or underground.
Okay, thank you, trustee Martinez. Anyone else? Okay. If there is no one else with any questions or comments at this time, Administrator Stonich?
Mayor, would you like us to talk about kind of the, the cost sharing parameters for, and we can always, again, get some more information on that eligibility, but kind of talk through how the cost sharing might work as well?
You know, that would be helpful. And yes, I would like the information on the other communities, as you had shared earlier, eligibility standards, how they all work, and how many people do participate in the program would be great, as well as, so the number of participants. And then touching on what trustee Martinez was just speaking about, 72 hours, I know that's been brought forth with some questions, but I would like further information, whether it's, you know, exactly how many hours, is it nothing under 48? Is that something we can talk through further when we get some more information from you? I think that might be helpful. And then, yes, if you wouldn't mind going to the next portion, that would be great. Thank you very much, Director Bethel.
Phil, if you can advance that, please? And so, and again, maybe kind of looking at this as a fresh section, and again, that eligibility can be changed however the mayor and board desires. So, the way the, the cost sharing was, was set up here, and again, there was a variety of different ways and different amounts, the cost sharing was set up in some of those other communities. Some kind of limited it by property, some limited it by the project, sometimes it was a combination of, of those two. And what we thought probably gave the most flexibility to the property owners was to have the village's cost participation be related to the overall project costs. So, it's something that every situation is probably going to be unique in terms of how many properties are benefiting or impacted, and even where the work needs to happen. So, for instance, the work may all happen on property A, property B doesn't have any work on it, but, you know, they're both benefiting as it relates to the improvement and moving water away. So, by kind of allocating that 50/50 cost share and $5,000 total to the project, as opposed to the property, it kind of lets the property owners come up with the best solutions for that area, and then kind of determine amongst themselves how that money gets, you know, shared. And again, maybe property A is getting more money, because there's more work that's being done there versus, you know, property, property B. I think one piece of feedback we did hear from other communities, though, is that it's usually best that the participants, the residents, the ones who are doing the work and benefiting from it, are the ones who are making those decisions, as opposed to the village trying to kind of mediate between the property owners of the value of the work and who should be getting, should be getting, getting what. And again, that 50/50 cost share, the $5,000 maximum per project, it pretty much fell in the middle of the road as far as the other communities that were out there from that, that survey. Kind of circling back to, I had mentioned before, that, you know, some programs only offered reimbursement for storm sewers, that they did not allow any other improvements. Again, we kind of thought, it's probably best, every situation's going to be different. Some neighborhoods don't have storm sewers that can be connected to. And so that, you know, a whole host of programs and options, and we had included, you know, rain gardens, dry wells, swales, berms, storm pipes, and, you know, and even a kind of an open category of other improvements, there may be something unique, a resident or contractor comes up with that we'd want to consider on a case-by-case basis. But, again, we thought it gave the residents the most flexibility to not just limit it to, to storm sewers. The way it was set up is basically any cost that those residents are incurring, whether it's surveying work, or engineering work, or construction work, would all be eligible for, for cost sharing underneath the, the program. The only cost that would not is that if there was a village permit cost, like Director Alwyn had mentioned, if somebody's connecting to a storm sewer, there's a permit cost associated with that, as well as, you know, if there's ancillary costs. So, if somebody wants to put in a swale, but they're gonna have to relocate their fence, the fence is kind of, again, incidental to the underlying stormwater project, and so the, the costs are related to what is the public benefit, just the stormwater work, not the, not the other items. One town, I think there were two towns, actually, they, they had specifically kind of run into the issue of residents who want to do the work themselves, they're handy, they, they own equipment or have a friend who owns equipment. And so, in that case, you know, when they're doing it themselves, you know, any of the material and equipment rentals, design costs are all reimbursed, but for a resident to do their own work, there isn't any labor that's necessarily reimbursed, just since it's hard to value, to value that. And reimbursement, the same way we work on all of our other cost sharing programs, is there just, there has to be a paid invoice and then proof of that payment with a canceled check or credit card statement, and then the village will, will make that, that reimbursement. So again, kind of general parameters on the cost sharing, and again, maybe a good point, Mayor, just to seek some feedback on kind of this portion of the, the concept.
We'll go ahead and open it up for board feedback, questions, comments on the cost sharing option.
Director Bethel? What is the average cost of this type of work in total? If I were gonna put, it was like a rain garden, how much is a rain garden?
It, it's hard, because it really depends on kind of the area and scope, and I'll kind of throw a number out there, and Eric, if you want to jump in, most of these, for a single property, depending on what they're doing, $2,000 to $3,000 is a, a fair number?
Yes, yeah, that's about, that's about what it would be for the, you know, the storm sewer connection, or some regrading, or some of those types of things. If they're hiring a landscaper to take care of it, then that's about, you know, realistically, anywhere from 700 to probably, you know, I mean, you, sky's the limit, depending on what they're looking at doing. But, but, you know, on average, it's probably, you know, you're, you're probably like 600 to 700 to up to, up to 2,500.
And trustee Page, you raise a good point, I'm sure, in that, like, a rain garden or dry well is going to be significantly less than a storm sewer, for instance.
Thank you. Anyone else, please? Okay?
So, can I move on to the next section, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Phil, if you can advance that again? All right. So what we wanted to do, kind of the final area here, is just maybe walk through kind of the flow of how it would, would function. And so, kind of for simplicity's sake, and let's just say there's a group of three property owners, they're gonna nominate a team captain, who's kind of the primary point of contact with the village, and is gonna coordinate that communication and paperwork. And that's, again, just to make sure that the property owners are in agreement, and they have one person, you know, who's submitting that, that information that everybody else is signing off on, where the village isn't trying to necessarily coordinate all that communication back and forth with every property, property owner. And again, ultimately, if it is a private property improvement, the, the contract itself would be held by the, the property owner, you know, the workmanship, the, there is a dispute, obviously, the village, you know, provides some guidance and suggestions to homeowners, you know, even outside of these types of programs, but ultimately, it's a, it is a private, a private contract. So, i-if a resident, a group of residents wanted to do some work, they would submit a, an application, and what would happen is Community Development and Public Works would evaluate that. And at this stage, it, it's just a concept plan, so they don't need to make a formal drawing or submittal, they don't need to hire anybody, it's, you know, here's what we're looking to do. And again, the intent is, you know, how can homeowners evaluate this without having to expend, you know, as few dollars as possible? So, they're gonna go ahead and share, here's what we'd like to do, and we're gonna review that, give them some feedback, and let them know that, yeah, that's something that would comply with code, it would address what you're looking for, you know, here's some ideas to think about. And the next step would be, is that there would be a formal application and the actual plan that would be submitted, and that's something that, and again, what we saw in some of the other programs, is it's either a landscape architect, which, again, most landscaping type contractors have, or, in some cases, somebody may be a professional engineer or knows somebody that, but you want something that is kind of, has been planned out, and they know is going to address the underlying problem. And so, again, trying to minimize that they're not hiring contractors, they're not paying for anything other than, here's our plan. And so, again, the village would review it and make sure it meets the code, and all the, the program requirements, and approve that and get it back to that group. Eric, I'm sorry, Phil, if you can go forward one more slide, please? And so, at that point, the homeowners would need to go out and get three proposals for the, for the work, and provide those to the village, and note who their preferred contractor is. And we, we, again, in terms of flexibility, wanted to leave it open-ended. Typically, the village, if it's providing reimbursement, it's always based on the lowest cost submitted to the homeowner. But again, sometimes, there may be a reason where there's a different contractor, a different method, that is going to make more sense. So, at least leaving it open that the village could, could consider, you know, may not be based on the lowest cost option, it may be, and it may not be your preferred contractor, but the village will still provide kind of this level of reimbursement. So, before the homeowners go forward, they know, here's how much the village is willing to, to fund. So at that point, each of those property owners is gonna make that permit application, they're all gonna have the same plan submitted, and that way, again, in terms of permitting, you know, if it's a code issue, and just for documentation to kind of show and memorialize that they've used the program, they would submit. And it's labeled applicable permit fee, there may be some improvements where it's really just for documentation and approval in the program, there isn't necessarily a permit fee related, related to that. So once the work is done, you know, the village would, would inspect that, making sure, one, it meets code, and two, it met actually what they were approved for in the program. And then there would be a final submittal, all the property owners, if there were three of them that participated, all three of them would be signing off, saying, yes, we agree, everything is done. And then at that point, they'd, they'd be seeking reimbursement, which would be processed once, you know, that proof of payment was, was provided. So, again, just kind of general parameters of how that would, that would flow. Again, Mayor, maybe that's kind of the final point, if there's some feedback related to, to the process and how that was being structured.
Well, thank you. Yes, go ahead, please.
Trustee Cruz, my question would be, and I know that we're kind of running up against the clock here, one of the three people who is having the work done decides, this isn't done right, I don't like it, I'm not signing off on it. What happens?
Well, and that was, that's kind of the situation we would hope to not put the village in the middle of, that the three homeowners would have to work out that, that issue to reach agreement or, or not in order to obtain the, the reimbursement. Obviously, again, we would probably try to facilitate, but, again, you're talking about a privately hired contractor for a private improvement, that there's probably a limit in terms of liability at which the village would want to get involved if there is a, is a dispute.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
Mayor?
Yes, please, trustee Martinez?
Just a quick question. So, at this point, Director Bethel, is a recommendation of the village to limit the cost per project to $5,000, regardless of the number of people involved, the number of households?
But that was the, that was the draft that was put together. Again, we could, we could put any combination of limits per home, or limits per type of improvement, or limits per, per project. But that was the one that, again, we saw in, I think it was probably about half of the other communities that were, that were out there.
I'm going back to the estimates that were given, I think, by Eric Alwyn, of 2,500, or you, but let's say $2,500 to do a certain project. So if three properties are involved, and each one of them spent $2,500, now we're talking $7,500. So the limit...
Right. So, yeah, so that was something that the village's cost would be, you know, in that case, 50%, so 3750. But ultimately, the mayor and board has the discretion in that the overall program, maybe you only fund $5,000 or $10,000 a year. So again, you can ultimately control the costs there, but it's not every project automatically becomes 5,000. It depends on the scope and the number of participants. And again, it's a 50/50 cost share, which means residents have to incur, you know, that same level of expense.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else, please? As we are getting... As we are getting your, our board meeting time, Administrator Stonehitch? First of all, I would like to thank Director Bethel and Mr. Alwyn for all of their great answers to all of our questions and helping us going forward. Administrator Stonehitch? If there is nothing further, pardon?
Yes, no, Mayor, there's nothing further, but we've got some follow-up items and some homework and deliverables to bring back to you, and we'll tee that up for what sounds like probably another study session.
Okay, that sounds great. As there is nothing further this evening for our study session, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the board study session meeting. The time is six fifty-five PM, and I'm going to ask for a motion, please?
Trustee Cruz, so moved.
Thank you, Trustee Cruz. And thank you, Trustee Page, for the second. All those in favor, please sign aye.
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 Anyone opposed? The study session is adjourned at six fifty-five PM. Thank you all very much.